If I get in, typically get in since anybody's gonna vote no.
Got it.
Do roll call and as you know if me somebody has is gonna vote no on something as a recommendation to council then we have to state their reason so we'll do the roll call and ask them to.
Okay.
State.
Sounds good.
I'm probably do a roll call if I get in typically get in since anybody's gonna vote no.
Got it.
Do roll call and as you know if me somebody has is gonna vote no on something as a recommendation to council then we have to state their reason so we'll do the roll call and ask them to.
Are we good, staff? Okay, let's call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM, please. May we have a roll call?
Chairperson Phil Goldstein.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Marty Joss.
Here.
Commissioner Lisa Baird.
Here.
Commissioner Tom Wood.
Here.
Alternate Jeremy Holt. Alternate Wendy Nuland.
Here.
Amendments to the agenda, commissioners, anything? Staff, no. Item number three, determination of alternate voting. So Wendy, you will vote tonight. Public comment, this is general public comment. This is an opportunity if somebody would like to comment on something that is not on the agenda. Do we have anybody signed up? Hang on a second for anything not. Did she have your name? Did you sign in?
Well, I signed for three things, but.
General, okay, if you come up to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Sure, my name is Dr. William Jenkins. I'm at 5507 Sugarloaf Court in Timneth. And just a suggestion. We got mailed these notices as a resident slash property owner about the planning commission meeting on three items that are relevant to us. And each of them have a case number on here, but they don't reference anything that's on the agenda. And so my suggestion would be if you're going to send out notices, when I went to sign up, if I didn't have help from this nice lady here, I wouldn't have known what to sign up for. So just a suggestion in the future, if you could put the case number on the agenda when you mail things out to people, it would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, William. Staff, a few, it sounds like a reasonable request. It may not be necessary every time, but certainly give it some thought if you think it is, perhaps there's a way to fine tune that. Thank you. Any other general public comment? Again, this is for anything that is not on the agenda. We will have public comment on agenda items in turn. Anything else, Natalie? Okay, all right, we will close the general public comment. Consent agenda, item number five consists only of approval of the September 6th, 2022 meeting minutes. Commissioners, any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, do I have a motion on item 5A, the consent, or item 5, the consent agenda? Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a move, a motion to approve in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, consent agenda is approved. We have business, business items, let's see, A through F. We're going to deviate a little bit, we, because 6A, 6B, 6C, Kevin, 6D, and E, correct, are all interrelated. Kevin, Kevin's going to give an overview to explain how, how these all are linked together and anything else he wants to share. And then Chad will give oversight or information on the individual items. So take it away, Kevin.
Thank you, chairperson. So as you had mentioned, items 6A, B, C, D, and E are all interrelated as they deal with what is known as the ultimate, overall Timneth South subdivision. So what we have in front of us tonight is a comprehensive plan amendment, three zoning map amendments, and then a sketch plan, amended sketch plan, approval, recommendation. The first item, the comprehensive plan amendment is kind of the first step for this to kind of tee up the remaining four items from that standpoint, as the comp plan amendment sets up the recommendation from three, or two of the zonings, and then ultimately the sketch plan then depends on two of those zonings. So what we're going to do is normally when we have multiple items on one subdivision, what we're going to do, we would normally do would kind of give a overview and talk about the process, all of the processes together. But since the comp plan is essentially the first and fourth most item that we need to discuss, we are going to give a presentation just on the comprehensive plan with a brief touch on the sketch plan, just to give you the overall idea of the property, but not get into specifics on that and kind of stay in the realm of just comprehensive plan, just because that's the first thing that kind of then sets in motion the other items. So with that, I will turn it over to Chad for his presentation.
Thank you, Kevin. So as Kevin said, the comprehensive plan is what is going to basically set up all of these applications going forward here. But we think it's important to kind of get a look at what the intent is from the developer or the applicant. So this is the sketch plan. So I know we're reviewing the comprehensive plan, but we're kind of using this just to kind of let you know what the vision was, what is being proposed here, and how that will be affected by that comprehensive plan. So you'll see on this document that there is some areas highlighted for townhomes or paired villas or paired homes, which is kind of what is required for the comprehensive plan to set that in motion. So as we discussed, the first one is the Timneth South Comprehensive Amendment. This is a comprehensive amendment application. Property owner is Timneth Ranch Investments, represented by Dino DeTullio, and the applicant is TB Group, represented by Kristen Turner. So this application actually is for two locations, either within or adjacent to the Timneth South first filing subdivision. That first subject property is actually going to be the one on the south, is generally, generally located east of Three Bell Parkway and south of Summerfields Parkway. For this, it'll be known as the Oshner Comprehensive Plan Amendment. As you may recall, this property is currently being reviewed for annexation and scheduled for public hearing with Town Council on October 11th. The second subject property is located at the southeast corner of Three Bell Parkway and River Pass Road, known as the, we'll call this the Three Bell and River Pass Comprehensive Plan Amendment for this discussion. So the application is proposing to amend the Timneth South Comprehensive Plan designation for the Oshner location from low density residential to medium density residential with the intent of developing single family attached units, specifically townhomes. This application is also proposed to amend the Comprehensive Plan Designation for the Three Bell and River Pass location from commercial mixed use to medium density residential, also with the intent of single family attached units. At this time, the product type is unknown, but has been communicated to be either townhomes or paired homes. Overall, staff finds the application to be in general compliance with the comprehensive plan, both being supported by sections that state that they allow for the variety of housing types to support a variety of household compositions and income levels, protecting existing and future residents from higher intensity non-residential uses. However, for the Three Bell and River Pass amendments, staff has found that there were some, several sections of the comprehensive plan that were not in support of the application, those relating to creating a balance between residential and non-residential development and incorporating a mixture of uses that incorporates the ability to live, work, shop, and play in a workable environment. There are other goals and objectives within this comprehensive plan that any project, regardless of type, need to meet, and there are goals and objectives that do not apply to this area of town or type of use. There was a neighborhood meeting requirement for this application. The meeting was held on August 31st at the South Timneth Clubhouse. Purpose of the meeting was to generate feedback and concerns from surrounding residents to the comprehensive plan. There were approximately 30 individuals present, and their comments along with the applicant's responses were included to the observation report in your packet. So due to the nature of the request and the various alternative positions or interpretations of the goals and objectives presented by the comprehensive plan, staff is seeking guidance on a motion to whether they would forward a favorable recommendation to Town Council or one of denial or one with conditions. With that, I will turn it over to Kristen for a brief presentation.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. My name is Kristen Turner. I'm with TB Group, 444 Mountain Avenue in Bertha. And I have been working with Dino and Stephanie on the planning for this project. I'm going to only talk for a minute or two about just the comp plan to stay aligned with what Chad has just presented, and then I'll come back up and give you some more specifics about the project a little bit later as well. But I just wanted to give you kind of the overall idea of why we're bringing these applications forward. There, Dino was able to acquire some additional property, and that is the Oshner piece of the property, which is going through the annexation process right now. And so it just triggered us to go back and revisit the master planning for this entire Timneth South portion of the property. That's a pretty big chunk of the property, and so we really wanted to look at it as a whole. It's also been a long while since there was any planning for this area done, and so we wanted to look at what are the conditions today? What is the market asking for? How can we help diversify this neighborhood a little bit more with a diversity of product? So, let's see, do I just click right or down? There we go, got it on the first try this time. So as Chad showed you this map, we are requesting, to achieve that overall vision, we are requesting two changes to the comp plan. The first one for that River Pass parcel, which is up in the northwest corner, would be a change from CMU to MDR. That currently has existing classification and zoning that would allow for mixed use, commercial development, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe high density residential as well in that area. So we kind of consider this a downgrade in classification to MDR. As you can see from the map, we think that it is an appropriate classification. It kind of completes that little MDR bubble, that overall MDR bubble that you see. And finally, we see the CMU parcel as the front door to Timneth South, and so we think this is a much more appropriate development product that we would be proposing as the entry to this community rather than a higher density residential, like apartments or a commercial development. And then the southern piece, the Oshner piece, is currently listed as LDR, and we are proposing that it's changed to MDR. Again, as you can see, that, that yellow piece is kind of carved out of that larger MDR parcel, so it feels appropriate to us to kind of fill it in with that MDR. In our overall planning, that is the portion of the site where we are also looking for townhomes on the property, and so that would allow us to apply the appropriate zoning to be able to move that vision forward. And I will leave it at that for now unless you have any questions for me and come back to tell you a little bit more later.
Great, thanks. We're going to go back and cover the other items that are all interrelated before we?
Nope, we were going to hit on this one with public comment and discussions first. Yep.
Okay, let me ask, I'm to deviate slightly, because I think Marty, our vice chair, initially raised this question about the interrelationships. I don't want to open this up to full discussion right now because I want to hear public comment first in keeping with our usual game plan, but did, so far, do you think that is giving you the adequate interrelation to the items? Okay, anybody else? Any questions about that? Okay, all right, with that, we are going to open this up to public comment. Natalie, do we have anybody signed up for public comment on this item? And I realize there's going to be a bit of a crossover. And so while we cannot, would not deny you the opportunity to speak on each individual item, and you're certainly welcome to do so, you probably ought to limit your comments to this specific aspect of everything that we're proposing to discuss tonight. Natalie, do we have anybody sign up for this item?
So no one specifically put down this item, but if you would like to?
To your, to your earlier point, well taken.
Yeah, it's a little confused.
Very good, okay, go ahead, William. And again, state your, state your name and address.
My name is Dr. William Jenkins. I live at 5507 Sugarloaf Court, which is really directly across from the currently C2 slash CMU. And I guess, in general, I'm in favor of the change from CMU to MDR or purely residential rather than commercial. If you look at your overall map, all of this current CMU shown on the, on the two plans are all along Harmony. There's really nothing in, in these residential areas that's, that's CMU. And when, when we first bought the property there, it was zone C2, and I, I noticed that...
What's your name again?
Kristen mentioned that the current designation would support high density residential, and Kevin nodded yes. And my reading of the C2, that when we were looking at the property, would not indicate high density. It was supposed to be community based, you know, favoring things that you could walk to or bicycle to, not drive to, et cetera. That was the description of the C2. So I'd hate to see high density right there, and I'd hate to see commercial. So I am in favor of the switch to residential. I will have comments later on other aspects.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
William, by the way, some, some, it's been a while since we've had a considerable amount of interest in items, so just some ground rules, bless you. We, we're, comments are limited generally to three minutes. You did, did just fine. Also, please know these are, just as it says, these are comments, it's not a debate, nor will we necessarily be able to have staff, let alone commissioners respond to that, although if, with our discretion, if we find it's something that, a question that we think can be answered easily. We also will ask, and Mr. DeTullio and Kristen certainly have been through this, this process enough with us before, I could see him already back there taking at least some mental notes on some things, so we may ask them to come up and address some of these things, a lot of which were probably addressed at the community meeting, but for the sake of the record, we also may have you do that as well. Okay, so other people offering public comment. Come up, state your name and address, please.
Thank you. My name is Clifford Nancaro, 6756 Covenant Court. And I'm a mostly retired CPA. My wife Debbie and I moved to Tall Grass in October of 2017. And tonight I am respectfully seeking increased collaboration between the members between the members of the Planning Commission, the Town Council, and the involved developers in making a legacy statement by creating in these remarkable and among the last remaining parcels of Colorado farm and ranch land here in Timneth, an enclave that includes an appropriate number of homes, open spaces, and visionary transportation infrastructure that rigorously conforms with the goals and objectives of the Timneth Comprehensive Plan adopted two years ago. Simply put, Objective 1.31 of that plan says, "To ensure that zoning changes and proposed developments conform to the comprehensive plan." Excuse me. And this is not 45 minutes, believe me. As you know, the plan's overarching principles are intended to build, quote, "A first-rate small town, a historic town between the mountains and plains with an exceptional quality of life, open spaces, small-town character, and a vibrant sense of community." The comprehensive plan is organized around six central themes: an unparalleled old town, a vibrant small-town center that cultivates local historic pride, social connections, and economic vitality; an open country feel with parks and natural areas; and an expansive and accessible system of parks, open spaces, and greenway corridors. There are survey data on pages six and eight, and it provided responses to two questions. Why do you think planning is important? Responses: thoughtful growth, traffic and road management, community character, and preserving open lands. What would you improve about the town of Timneth in the future? Response: preserve open ag lands. The future land use map on page 81 shows the area for which these zoning changes are being requested to be predominantly low-density with equivalent amounts of rural residential and medium-density residential. At the moment, with the exception of the Preserve, the lowest-density Timneth developments are Wildwing and Saratoga, well north of Harmony Road. I believe it is important to avoid a sense of South Timneth neighborhoods somehow being on the wrong side of the tracks, overly dense with random elevations, colors, and characteristics, and marginally adequate traffic flows. To that end, I would implore the members of the Planning Commission to approach these various zoning requests slowly, to allow time for community input, and to consider alternative development sketch plans. These plans should preserve some agricultural zoning, include a majority of R2 medium-density zoning, and limit any approved R3 zoning to the lower end of the allowable density. I believe this can be accomplished in a manner to achieve the developers' profit and council's tax revenue objectives, but it will take a revision of the sketch plan as currently drawn to do so. Limiting the density of homes and multifamily units to be built on these two parcels and giving more thought to incorporating rationally-placed neighborhood and collector roadways will relieve pressure on Harmony Road, allow school buses to travel unhindered to the new middle-high school without competing every morning with 600 new commuters, and provide routes for emergency egress of these neighborhoods should that ever become necessary. Finally, the intersections of Three Bell and River Pass and Three Bell and Summer Fields are community crossroads, connecting or alternatively and less happily segregating our community's several neighborhoods. I think particular care needs to be considered when authorizing development at these two important junctures as to the type and appearance of units authorized, if any. In fact, it would be a dream for the town to consider acquiring the River Pass Three Bell parcel pursuant to Plan Objective 3.42, which is to adequately fund the development of publicly-owned properties in Timneth, including parks, public open spaces, and landscaping around-town facilities. Thank you.
Thanks, Clifford. Natalie? Anybody else signed up? We do. Okay. Sir, if you come up to the, please come up to the... No, no, let me stop you. Please come up to the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Raymond Kutchler. I'm at 6025 Yellow Tail Street, Timneth. And I was going to ask you, this is the first meeting I've been to, and I wanted to get a little bit more information. I'm reading some of the plans, and this is the first time I've seen it. I am having some difficulty understanding exactly where this is going to show up, and I was just going to ask for some clarification, and that's all I was just asking for.
Do you mean where this is located?
Well, you've got, you have certain places that change from C something or other to an MDU or whatever, and I'm trying to find out exactly where that is located, okay? And I'm trying to understand so I can basically provide more of a question.
Okay, we're deviating a little bit from our protocol, but if you're asking where is this particular property located, I believe staff could probably call up a map here and show you.
May I look at it?
Certainly.
I just can't see this far.
Okay. Just, okay, why don't you go back to the podium, and if you have a specific question or a comment, that is, please go ahead and make your comment.
The comment I have is two little things that are on there. It says, that's one of them, that the CMU, that's... And where is the... Okay, CMU is commercial to MDR being density.
Chad, put your microphone on, please. This is a land use change. It's going from CMU, which is commercial mixed-use. It's a land use designation. It's changing to medium-density residential. That's the proposal on the table right now.
Okay.
Meaning that it going from a commercial type of uses to residential types of uses.
Okay.
The other one is down there off of the very south end of Three Bell Parkway. And it's low-density residential currently, and the proposed change is to medium-density residential. So it's a higher-density residential from a low-density.
Do you have a specific comment on that? If you, hopefully you've...
I have a, you know, basic comment is that when you're going to an MDR, isn't that going to be a little bit, you were talking about more units per square acre or whatever it is, is that correct? So therefore, that will increase the amount of cars on it, the number of people that are going to be utilizing it, the schools, everything. So it's just as a taxpayer, that's going to affect me, isn't it?
As a residential use?
Hang on a second. Hang on a second. Yeah, we're not debating that. But if you have a specific comment to that effect, if that's your view of this, you're welcome to state that.
You don't have to debate it. I've just made that as a statement. Is it correct?
Okay.
All right, never mind. Then that's fine.
That's your, if you have a statement to the effect that if the density increases, it increases traffic, et cetera, that's fine.
That is my statement.
Okay. Very good. Anything else?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Natalie, anybody else signed up on this item? Okay, yes. Please come up, state your name and address.
My name's Diane Diamond. My address is 5975 Yellow Tail. And my family has moved around a lot with my husband's job, and we have four young kids. And we took a lot of consideration into where we wanted to plant our family and our children and raise them in a community. And a few things that were, we had moved from, we just moved from Oregon, but we've lived in Minneapolis, we've lived in Texas, and Ann Arbor, Michigan, and all the places. And one of the things that drew us to the Timneth Ranch community is it felt like small-town charm close to city access. And I loved that it had a pool. I loved that my kids could run outside and play with the kids in their elementary school. And I'm not saying that that still couldn't be with the new changes, but I do have concerns that it's higher density than what we expected when we initially bought our home. And I don't know if any of you have moved around a lot, but when you move around a lot and you dream and you work really hard for the house you're going to buy, and you have it envisioned in like what you're hoping for. And I have been able to live in townhomes when my husband was a medical resident, and it's provided an opportunity for my kids to attend good schools when I couldn't afford the housing in them. So I do respect that level of diversity. But I do have concerns, like, because I do have four kids that are 11 and under. We spend a lot of time in the summer at the pool, and it's already overcrowded. The lifeguards are always yelling at the kids. No balls are allowed. There's no floaties. And so no floaties are allowed, and adding that many more townhomes affects the pool. And Dino already knows me as the pool lady. But I also have concerns about the school and the increase in traffic on that road because ultimately, my dream was that my kids could ride their bike to their friend's house. And having that increase in traffic, that affects that too. So I guess I just want you to consider maybe a lower-density housing there and with in mind the families who bought their homes with the dream in mind that they worked hard for and that they wanted that community, and it's going to change. And I understand like the need for diversity and allowing other people to be able to afford to live in the neighborhood, and I get that, but maybe not have it such high-density. Or maybe, you know, just give them a pool over there too, Dino. You know, think on that. And that's it.
Thank you. Other comments on this business item?
Can I make one short comment?
Did you already, you already spoke, William, on this, correct? Maybe you can, maybe, so that, no, 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 I'm sorry. Look, maybe so I can, we can accommodate that. I'm sure you can cleverly work that in if you want to speak on the next item.
Except that you're going to vote on this before you speak.
No, we're, no, we are.
You're going to vote on this before you deal with the other.
Okay, but you already had a comment. Go ahead. Go ahead. I'm, oh, go ahead. I'm going to allow this.
It's one simple sentence again. My name, William Jenkins, 5507 Sugarloaf Court. If you look at the plan, all that MDR between the CMU and the LDR that's being proposed to change to MDR, all of that, that's developed, and I realize some of it's not developed. All of it is currently single-family homes. Even though it was MDR, they're all single-family homes. There are no paired homes. There are no townhomes. There are no multifamily homes. It's 100% single-family.
Thank you. Okay. And that's, we're not going to, made that exception and almost immediately regretted it, but you could have worked that in. But out of deference to how well-spoken you and the gentleman behind you have been, I allowed it, so.
Thank you, sir.
But, okay. Staff, any clarification? Dino, Kristen, is there anything you'd like to add to what was said on this? Yes, ma'am? Okay, I was about to close public comment. Go ahead, come up, state your name and address. Appreciate as we move forward here. If you want to speak on an item, please sign in.
Okay, sorry. So my name's Paige Palmer. I live at 5667 Calgary. So just a couple streets down from what is currently the commercial. So my concern there is, again, that it's, behind it, it all says MDR. But like he said, it's all single-family housing. And I think with, currently, there are already over 353 residential lots going in around that area. 100, over 100 are townhomes. 180 of them are single-family homes, I believe. And those were only the ones that I counted. All up around Bethke Elementary, it's high-density. I think it would make a lot more sense to keep it single-family in that neighborhood. It's like enough for maybe a street or two to just complete the neighborhood, I would assume. And then I have a friend who's not here, and she said she's like, I sent it in, but I sent it in late because I had an emergency. So is that something I can read her statement, or do you want?
You can submit, you can submit that for the record.
I believe we have it.
Is it, what's your friend's name?
We have the one from Jeanette.
What's your friend's name?
Jeanette.
We received it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Last call on this item. Any other public comment? Okay, we're closing the public comment now on this business item. All right. So with that, Kristen, Dino, anything you'd like to comment on?
I guess a little bit of that. Dino DiTulio, 1927.
Make sure you're on the mic there, Dino.
1927 Wilmington Drive in Fort Collins. And I know the commissioners and staff are aware of this, but maybe just for the people in the audience, that this area has been planned for these units since the very beginning of Timneth growth in the early 2000s. And that includes streets, sewer lines, all infrastructure. The pool was designed for the ultimate build-out of the neighborhood. And we're actually asking for a downzoning on the, from the CMU to the MDR in the corner. So that's always been zoned, as you all know, for commercial, which allows high-density mixed-use. So we're actually asking for downzoning there. And then for the other parcel that is LDR, we were able to acquire that and annex that. It's surrounded by MDR, and I think you'll see when the sketch plan comes up, a large portion of the acreage that is currently planned for MDR is actually single-family detached. So we're in essence just asking to move our MDR to the parcel that we've recently acquired. And we're not actually asking for more units than have originally been planned for this area from the very beginning of, in the early 2000s. So that's, I just wanted to clarify that, that if you can see the large area of MDR to the right of the LDR, we're actually proposing single-family detached in that area, which is an LDR use.
Thanks. Kristen, anything you, part of the team? Okay. I'm going to bring it up front now. Commissioners discussion on this business item. Who wants to go first?
Marty?
So I think he just covered it, but one of the things I was just making sure of is the MDR that we're considering to the south, that's just that, I don't remember how many acres it was. So the rest of it was already zoned MDR.
Correct.
So this is just a change there.
Yep.
So why did that come in as LDR?
On the comp plan?
Yeah.
So back when we did the comp plan, that property owner was still the original property owner, the Oshners. So at that time, we, without Mr. DiTulio or anyone else owning it, if the development around did occur, you know, before the comp plan had finished and that property developed on its own, that was the designation that we had for it. It wasn't anticipated that, you know, it would be combined with, you know, Mr. DiTulio's development at the time of the comprehensive plan.
That was back then, not the recent.
That was back then. That was the recent one two years ago as well. Because at that time, it was still owned by the Oshner family. So if they held on to it for, you know, decades or decided to develop it on their own, that was the intent for keeping it as it was. It was keeping with the 2013 designation.
Okay.
That's it. Lisa?
Explain a little bit more about CMU and why it can support. If it's commercial mixed-use, why can it support a high-density residential?
So CMU allows for multiple, a couple of designations that can be with... So CMU allows for multiple, a couple of designations that can be within that district. So zoning wise, one of that design, one of those designations is community commercial. And community commercial has a conditional use allowance for multifamily residential.
Which is basically an apartment.
Correct.
Now, if it stayed as commercial mixed use and, and we didn't change the zoning, then even if it got to that point and the owner applied for it to be apartments, the, that could be denied by planning commission and therefore town council. Just because it is CMU does not mean that it, the owner could apply for and put apartments on there. Is that correct?
So with the, with the current, with the zoning of community commercial CC as a conditional use, it's essentially a use by right with additional conditions that are placed on the development, such as screening, buffering, lighting, you know, things like that. So apartments would be a, a use by right with additional conditions added on to it.
And the conditions are added by?
By staff, planning commission and council.
So when the comp plan was done in 2013 and he, you know, said that this has always been the plan, has it always been the plan that, that parcel on River Pass was to be townhomes? Because that's what you're planning now.
That was zoned commercial when, 2005, I think. And I, I didn't want it to be commercial then. That was a town board decision, I think, or a, might have been a staff decision. Trying, it, Timneth was in its infancy. I think we had 140 residents or something at the time. And the thought was grab nodes of commercial everywhere and anywhere. And, you know, we'll, Starbucks will spring up and we'll have lots of tax revenue. I think as we've evolved and we figured out where the commercial wants to be, it wants to be on Harmony Road, it wants to be at the interstate. And it doesn't want to be in the middle of a neighborhood like that. And it's not really marketable that way. And so I've always, my opinion has always been that it wanted to be a, an attached townhome project. But it's taken a while to, you know, we, we stalled intentionally to assemble the rest of the property around there. And I, it was my opinion that, that as the town evolved and the commercial developed, that the staff and the elected officials would come to agree with that. And I guess that's where we are today, that, that commercial is more appropriate on Harmony Road and at I-25.
And yet, you know, I mean, there is the debate, staff is not recommending anything. They're looking to planning commission to come up with some direction on this one, that's specific in what your instructions to us are. Is there any indication that there's any interest in that property for any commercial development of any kind?
I mean, we've had it for 17 years and there hasn't been.
And so the reasoning for looking at this property then, in the midst of single family detached homes, and then of course, there's the property that is just right kitty corner to it, that is developing, that where the barn is, and that's going to be single family detached. And then as you go further and, and as the lady said, Bethke, there's a lot of those duplexes or those multifamily homes. Why in that location put townhomes or multifamily homes other than the high density factor? What's the reasoning other than that?
Well, it's purely in land planning, in my opinion. It's, it's, I can make the same money by putting 30 single family detached houses in there as I can putting 50 attached houses in there. But I think that it's better planning on that corner instead of having, you know, a myriad of backyard fences with, you know, uncontrollable things happening in that backyard, other than your fence design, to, to have common area landscape that is more prevalent in attached product so that you can control the streetscape much easier than you can with single family detached product. So on that particular corner, it's such a visible spot. I think it's going to be a better use. And the streetscape will be much better than single family detached. But quite honestly, from a profit perspective, it's the same. And from, this seems to be getting all the attention on, we've got a whole, I mean, that, this is where the focus is for some reason, that, that, that is frightening people, I think, to have attached product proposed there. And I'm not quite sure why, to be honest with you, because I think it will be a, a better streetscape as attached than it would be as detached.
Well, I don't, I don't think it's fair to to typify people's questions as frightening. I mean, we have the right to know what thinking is and why it is and understand from a development standpoint, what the process is and why you're asking for a change in a comprehensive plan that was thought out over many years. And, you know, I served on the comp plan. And, and so, I mean, I think we have a right to know. It's not a matter of fear, it's a matter of trying to understand.
Yeah, you weren't at the neighborhood meeting, it was fear.
On my end?
No, not your end, no, not at all.
Ma'am?
So.
I, I, I hear all the time fear of what, who's going to buy attached housing? I hear it all the time. And it's typically people that are at a different stage of life than people that are buying detached housing. And I, I do think it's a fear. It's my opinion, I'm not saying you're scared. But there is general fear of attached housing, a fear of apartments, anything other than single family detached. And I, I simply offer this to say that it's usually just people at, at a different stage of their life.
My concern more is towards the density portion of it. And the roadway and, and is that density? And if the density is no difference from, like you said, you can do the same with 30 single family homes as you can with that. And it doesn't add, you know, it's, the stress of sheer numbers is significant. And then with the development that is happening further south, you know, you have the additive value. And again, that's not anything that is not going to happen. I mean, the development south is going to happen. It's been in plans for years, that is going to happen, it's a matter of how, right? So, and it's a matter of that intentional plan. The volume of the people and the traffic and the stressors, that's my concern. That's, that's my big concern.
I think you're talking about 15 or 20 housing units. And so I don't, I don't think that's significant relative to traffic volumes of the way these streets and utilities have been designed.
15 to 20 in this townhome, multiplex versus single?
Yes, yes. And I, I would just offer that I think that, that the diversity of product is, is a far more important criteria, I guess, for it, for a town's health and wellbeing than, than 15 or 20 units. The streets and the utilities have been designed for it.
So you say that this property is also kind of the gateway to the, the south in that. How do you envision that to be? Because you say, you know, it was originally designed in the comp plan as that commercial, commercial's not going to happen. You know, I ride by that property every day, not every day, but three times a week. From the walkability, there's so many houses around there. Would it be great to have a fun little place where there was some nice cafes and et cetera, et cetera? Yes, that would be wonderful, where people could walk and take their kids to go get pizza. If there is no commercial interest in that property at all to build that kind of thing, then how do you envision this property being the gateway visually? What do you see it?
I see strong landscaping, I see strong green belt elements, common area landscaping that's able to be controlled through our district as opposed to backyards, you know, facing the street that we can't control. I see good elevated product. I don't, I don't see commercial there being viable. So I, I haven't even seen what you're talking about coming in on Harmony Road yet. It, I hope someday. I mean, that's what every town's dream is, and as a developer, we hope we see that. But, but I think when it does come, it's coming to Harmony.
And then one question relative to the Oshner. Can you go back to the one that looks at the south, the whole south development down there? Because the Oshner annexation, the, the townhome area, the Oshner property is just a portion of that townhome proposed area, correct? It's just kind of the center of that.
Correct.
That area. Okay.
So the, I think I was referring the area to the right where you can see kind of, if I can approach and point out.
Sure, go ahead, Dino.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, you want to go next?
Sure. Personally, I, I think that this is great. I'm glad that we're changing from a commercial to a residential. This is clearly a, a residential part of Timmeh. And even though, you know, everybody looks at the, the, the master plan in different ways, I, I do think if it was all the same in terms of single family houses versus multifamily houses, if we look at the, at the plan and how the, the data was driven, out of 311 responses, people looking for new housing options were less than 10. And if we look at the, at where most of the, 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 the thought behind the plan was, we wanted thoughtful growth, a small town feel and, and overall quality of life, community character. I think we, in my opinion, should approve this, but with conditions. And the conditions being that we take into consideration the nature of the neighborhood now, even though it is MDR through most of this area, if we could have the same type of, of houses, I think that it would be more in keeping with the neighborhood and more in keeping with the small town character of Timmeh. Some of the comments about other high density in other places, I, I think are correct. And I think that keeping this area to the extent we can as single family homes, owner occupied homes is, is really what we want as a town. And that would be my, my feeling on this.
Tom, let me ask you to clarify with, with staff's help if, and you may.
I believe in the, in the recommendations.
Just one second, let me just tell you what I want you to clarify. Okay, what, what conditions specifically are you suggesting that be attached to this?
So, so what Chad has written and, and what direction you're looking for is either a recommendation in favor, a recommendation opposed, or a recommendation with, with any conditions that we might, we might desire. Is that, is that correct?
That, that's correct. Now, we're gonna, yeah, we'll have to consider the conditions. But, and, and I'm also gonna tangentially, if you will, I'm gonna ask staff if, depending on the conditions, if it's more appropriate to state those during the other subsequent phases of this. Because I could already see relating to the sketch plan or something. But go ahead and suggest what condition or conditions. And then staff, you can comment whether or not is appropriate for the comp plan amendment or for any of the subsequent items. Kevin, you understand, see what I'm, so what, what condition?
So, so I think as, as we look at, at the zoning of, of R3 as rec, as requested in the MDR sections, we, we could throw some additional overlay kind of comments so that, that we recommend consideration of single family homes, densities of four houses per acre rather than eight. Is that correct?
Not from that standpoint, as it's, there's no PD overlay action on it. So if the zoning is approved for a certain zoning district without a, you know, overlay district on it, it has the full allowance of what our land use code offers from that standpoint.
Could we make a, a, a suggestion that it's MDR with an R2 rather than R3 designation?
So that's where it would have to come to the zoning. So for the comp plan item that's before you, that's a condition that wouldn't necessarily be an attainable one for this. Because then at the zoning is where you would either approve the zoning or not approve the zoning based off of the comp plan since.
So what, what kind of conditions, Kevin, would be reasonable?
So, so at a comp plan, at a comp plan, it's, it's more, it's got to be more of an attainable condition of meeting goals and objectives of the comp plan, not a specific zoning, not a, you know, specific density or housing type. So at the comp plan level, you would have to put a condition of, you know, something that then would then trickle into the sketch plan or the other zonings at that point. It's, it's not setting up right now, the, the densities or the exact, you know, housing product types.
Understood. So in the comp plan level, if I look on page six of the comp plan, if we would emphasize maintaining community character, which is the number third, three item that had more than 50% of the responses in favor of, would, would that be appropriate?
So.
If you look at page seven, small town feel, family friendly, overall quality of life, which is by far the highest levels, is that something we can add as a comment?
That's, but that's where it's, you can add it as a comment. But that's a, you know, subjective type of a comment condition to where it's, you know, who actually, you know, your opinion of that is different than Phil's or Marty's, you know, from that standpoint. So we can add that in, but it's more the zoning to where you would have the more effective change with, you know, certain conditions for, because, you know, for example, the MDR does allow for R2 zoning. So that's where the zoning would be more appropriate to have that discussion, have, have your input at that point.
So as our recommendation goes to town council, what comments, other than what I've already made, would be appropriate?
You, you can make a, what you've made is a generic comment of you have concerns over, you know, certain aspects. Those can be passed along, as we've done in the past, to council for their consideration that, you know, you or other members of the planning commission have had, or have concerns over this development for, you know, these reasons, and those can be passed along.
Excuse me, a point of order here, though. Does it have to be a?
It doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be a condition of approval.
You would just note that Commissioner Wood expressed
Correct.
the opinion
Correct.
on that. You can also, and please correct me if I'm wrong. We are, as we vote on these individual items, as per our protocol, if anybody votes against an individual item, we're, we're going to do a roll call vote. You'll, you will be asked to express the basis for your negative vote. So that goes to council. So that's also an option as well. If you
Understand.
if you vote no on this, you could say, because you do not feel. But that's why I lobbed it over to you, because I had a feeling this was more appropriate. What I knew he was likely to say was more appropriate for subsequent business items here.
Correct.
Meaning mainly the zoning.
Yep.
Okay, go ahead, Tom, do you have additional?
That covers my questions.
Okay. Wendy? Okay. Marty, did you, as Tom was bringing that up, did you have some subsequent comment, I, I thought?
No, I'm, I'm.
Okay. Commissioners, anything else? Anything else on this? Staff, anything else? Developers? Okay. So a couple of comments that I have on this. First of all, diversity of product is important. Okay, so I've seen that. It wasn't until about a few years ago where we had any diversity at all. So I believe that is an important consideration and this meets that test. Second, second thing is, and somebody touched on it, but I'll be a little bit more pointed. If you're talking about traffic and if you're talking about anything that might be objectionable, whatever that is, I would argue that in some cases, certain allowable commercial uses would, could be more objectionable, especially given the traffic, given the hour. Especially, uh, given the traffic, given the hours of that. So I would argue that, that moving to a residential, uh, uh, designation is, is, uh, counter to that. Okay? Third thing is, uh, less traffic. I find when you measure, uh, and I don't, we don't have any kids, but given what I, when I look around and I see the average single family home with a three car garage and two kids with their cars, uh, I find it hard to believe that townhomes will not have less traffic emanating from them to and from, uh, because you're simply not gonna have, likely not gonna have two, three, probably two, but you're not gonna have four or five cars, uh, per unit. So in that sense, I think you do, with this product, you do have less traffic. And, and lastly, and Mr. DeTulio mentioned this, but, uh, and I'll, I'll tell you, this is a card I don't like to play. But, because I've been on that side of the bar, both where I live now in Timoth and in my previous neighborhood in Fort Collins. And that is the fact that, and staff, please correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, at the time that this was originally conceived of and, and, and tentatively, if not originally plotted, any of these residents had an opportunity to, to ask the question, is there, are there going to be other uh, other construction in that piece of land? And furthermore, uh, could they have asked, and is there a possibility that whatever it's conceived for could also be changed? I, I'm asking rhetorically because I think I know the answer to that. So I guess what I'm saying is, it was there all the time. So, uh, no, I'm sorry. Uh, it was there all the time. So, uh, this goes back to what, 2005, I understood? Or before that? So, uh, I don't, I normally don't like to bring that up, but, but those are questions that we all, we, uh, we all should have asked before we, if we had objections to there being additional homes or any other structures in there. Those are questions we would have asked at the time that we were considering buying there. Commissioners, anything else before I ask for a motion on this? Nope. Okay.
Phil, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. Tom, are you, do you have conditions? Any conditions that you would attach to that? Cause we would have to consider those first.
Yes.
Okay.
Comments or conditions?
Comments or conditions?
Just conditions.
Okay, what are your conditions?
I'd like to, to make a motion that we approve the request with the condition that, uh, town council take into consideration the character of the neighborhood.
And how, how specifically would you, uh?
The character of the neighborhood, right now
That's, that's rather vague.
It is. And I, but following up on what Kevin said, and we can address it in zoning, that, that, uh, that the town council recognized that the character of the neighborhood is important and that all of the areas surrounding there are single family homes.
I'm, I'm afraid, you know, I'm, I'm only gonna be one vote, uh, as to whether we would attach that condition. And staff, you can help me with this. I'm afraid that's a little too vague. When you elaborated on, and you said only single family homes, that would appear to be the character that you're proposing.
Yes.
Okay. And we've already said that that, that's not appropriate, correct?
That'd be more of a comment, not a condition.
That's a, that's a comment. And if you want that comment on there, uh, if it's a condition, okay? Then we would have to, as, as to a point of order, we would have to vote on that as a, as a condition first. That we would, we agree, the majority of us agree, that would be a condition. But that can't be a condition because it's not appropriate to a comp plan.
Yeah. So, so maybe I'm, I'm, I'm grasping at straws a bit here. The condition I'm looking for is, is, uh, community character would be the word right out of the, the community plan. Is that appropriate?
So that's where, once again, I was saying, it's, that's more of a, a subjective, you know, type thing. You know, your vision of community character is different from the other four that are up there.
Yep.
Um, so a condition is more of a specific item that is, is considered not a subjective item. That is considered, that's why i- it would be more of a comment that you would pass along to council that, you know, the, the character of the neighborhood is, you know, is thought of and considered, um, on that. But it's not a co- it's not a condition of approval, because a, a condition of approval is something that the developer has to meet. And his view of, you know, the community character is different from yours as well.
And I don't wanna overly, uh, burden the, the developer. So I'll, I'll, I'll revise my motion to say I'd, I'd like to move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item, business item 6A, the Timoth South Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Uh, let's take a roll call vote, if we could, please. Natalie?
Chairperson Phil Goldstein.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Marty Jost.
Yes.
Commissioner Lisa Baird. Commissioner, Commissioner Tom Wood.
Yes.
Alternate Jeremy Holt. Alternate Wendy Nealon.
Item 6A, uh, Timoth South Comprehensive Plan is approved on a five, zero vote.
Chairperson.
If you would like to add a comment, just as Tom
I would just like to add a comment to mine to, um, pass along to town council to, um, kind of echo what, what Tom said is, is to keep in mind the character of the community and to keep in consideration lower density as much as possible. Just leave it at that.
Staff, okay, you, all right, okay, so we got, you can
I think you've got more than enough comments.
You, you can note that
Yep.
Commissioners Baird and Wood made that
Correct.
Comment going forward. Okay. I, with that, item 6B, uh, zoning map, excuse me, zoning map amendment for the annexation of the property known as Oshner. Kevin?
So
Or Chad, that's Chad.
Yep. Um, so just to kind of hit on from what I discussed at the beginning. So since the comp plan was the first one that, um, started all of these to be intertwined, at this point, we're gonna kind of discuss all of the items together, um, cause the three zonings and then the sketch plan are all combined, as you kind of saw already, um, from the overall proposed development. Um, so Chad's gonna do what we normally do is just kind of have a discussion on all of them, and then we will take individual separate actions.
Very good. Thanks. Chad?
Thanks, Chairperson. Uh, so for the next item, we have the Oshner zoning map amendment. Uh, this application is linked to the Osh- Oshner annexation that came before you at the September 6 Planning Commission meeting. Uh, the applicant is requesting to amend the town zoning map for this property, uh, to R3, to family residential, conforming to the comprehensive plan designation proposed in item 6A, the medium density residential. Uh, this zoning district would allow for a maximum, maximum density of eight dwelling units per acre. Uh, as discussed, the applicant is proposing or has the intent of single family attached dwellings to be compatible with adjacent uses in architecture. Next, item 6C, we have the Timoth South rezoning. Uh, this is a rezoning application for the property at the southeast corner of Three Bell Parkway and River Pass Road. Uh, the applicant is proposing to amend the town's zoning map for this property from community commercial C2 to R3, to family residential, conforming with the comprehensive plan designation proposed in item 6A. Again, this zoning district allows for a maximum density of eight dwelling units per acre. Last of the rezonings, we have the Graves property. Uh, this is a rezoning application, uh, west of Three Bell Parkway, south of Summerfield Estates. They're requesting to amend the existing, uh, zoning designation of agriculture to R2, single family residential. Uh, this zoning district allows for a maximum does, density of four dwelling units per acre and is in conformance with the change of the complement, comprehensive plan amendment in 6A. Next, we have the Timoth South Sketch Plan Amendment. Uh, this is a sketch plan application to amend a previously approved sketch plan for the Timoth South subdivision. Uh, this conceptual document is the first step within the major subdivision process outlining the potential configuration of the development as well as the proposed density. As you can see on this plan, uh, there are several access points, uh, from the north to existing streets, to provide connection and entry to the proposed dwellings to the south. Uh, the application also includes a predetermined open space locations, neighborhood park, and provides a continuation of the Pooter River Trail from the north, uh, connecting that to the south. This application is proposing a maximum density up to 630 dwelling units comprised of a mixture of state residential detached lots, single family detached lots, and single family attached lots, intended to conform to their maximum densities allowed within each respective zoning district. Uh, the proposed, uh, the property lies within the Fort Collins Loveland Water District Service area, and the proposed density meets their master plan for this area and has been supported by the district. Uh, again, this was part of that neighborhood meeting, um, held on August 31st. Those concerns and their feedback was included in that report. Uh, the application was reviewed against the sketch plan review criteria in the Timoth Land Use Code and find that it is in conformance with that criteria. With that, I will turn it over to Kristen.
All right. Mic volume, okay?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Okay. So I'm actually going to, um, describe the project to you just in the reverse order. I think if we start by looking at the sketch plan, um, hopefully you'll have a good feel for what the vision is that we're trying to create here. And then the zoning will make a little bit more sense if it follows it. Um, so I wanted to start at the very top. Does this have a pointer? Oh. No, it doesn't work on the TVs. Okay. Then I will just tell you where I'm, where I'm pointing in my mind. Um, so I'm, I'd like to start at the top of the plan. So we'll start with that River Pass parcel, which is the purple one in the northwest corner. Um, so we only got to talk about this briefly before, but to give you a little bit more, um, description of what we're looking for here, we do consider this the front door to the community. Um, those are both collector roads that are located on the west and the north side of this, which means that no development, regardless of what it is, will take access from those roads, whether it were to be single family detached or townhomes. Um, so as Dino mentioned earlier, if it were to develop the single family D homes, the single family detached homes, what we would have, the look there would be fence line and backyards, um, a large landscape buffer similar to what you see along the rest of those collector roads. There's certainly no problem with the visual of that. It's, it's lovely. Um, but what we envision for this area to kind of create that gateway that, you know, welcome to the neighborhood is a townhome development. Um, these would be rear loaded townhomes, which means you would be activating this street. And the way that we do that is with front doors and front porches that are facing both of those collector roadways instead of back fence lines and backyards. Um, we would be able to control the architecture to make sure that it's compatible with the rest of the neighborhood. Um, there are some absolutely beautiful townhomes out there, and that is what we want to see come into this development. Um, I think Dino made a comment at our, at our community meeting about, you know, hey, this is our front door, so we need to be sure we get this right. And that is absolutely the, the attitude that we're bringing forward with this planning and what we would anticipate seeing here. Um, when you put those front doors on collector roads and those front porches, what you end up with are kiddos that are out riding their bicycles on the sidewalks. Um, you see neighbors sitting out front chatting with each other as they're keeping an eye on their kiddos. You have no curb cuts, so you don't have to worry about safety, um, like you would if it were other types of developments that would, um, take access from those roads. And again, with the single family detached, we wouldn't have that because of those collector roads. But it is the difference in the look and the feel and the energy that you would have along those roads of front doors and folks coming in and out and people sitting on their porches versus seeing a line of fences. So that is really the, the big idea. Um, the other thing with townhomes is that all of the landscape is controlled, um, by the HOA. So you may or may not have it, have had a neighbor in the past who did a beautiful job, uh, maintaining their landscape in a single family detached, or maybe not such a great job maintaining their landscape. Um, with this type of development, it would all be maintained by the metro district and HOA, uh, which means it would be, you know, regularly mowed, there wouldn't be, um, you wouldn't have people leaving stuff out, um, no dead bushes and trees, things like that. So you get that consistency, um, again, which we just think is a bonus for that, that entry to this portion of the community. So then, as we move south to the site, um, you'll see the rest of the development. And this probably looks a lot more similar to what you've seen in previous plans. Um, as Dino stated before, the density is no different than what was always envisioned for this community. Um, you see a mix of housing types, so there are multiple single family detached lot sizes that are shown. I think there's about three or four of them. Um, we are showing patio homes. We are also showing townhomes. Again, this is just providing a little bit more diversity to this community, primarily single family detached. As you can see, I'm gonna estimate that at 90, 95% single family detached. So definitely, um, consistent and compatible with the rest of the neighborhood, but allowing for those opportunities to have some different product types out there. Um, and we are definitely seeing, you know, I, I think we're all probably reading and hearing about housing crisis, you know, across the country, um, lack of affordability, people in all different stages of their lives. So with these patio homes and townhomes or the paired villas, you know, this could be somebody who just recently graduated and has gotten their first job and they're looking for their very first home. Um, it could be a retired couple that's looking to downsize or a family that recently had their kiddos move out and they're a couple of empty nesters. Um, so, you know, it, these product types allow for, um, all sorts of different ages, for families in different stages of their life, um, to be able to live in this beautiful community and enjoy the amenities that are here. Um, so you'll see that we have the largest single family detached that are shown along the southern portion of the property, right along the ditch. Um, they're kind of a creamy color. Those are those estate lots. As you move towards the east, they'll get a little bit smaller, but they're still pretty significantly sized along the ditch. And then as you come up into the site, you'll see that the lots get slightly smaller, all sizes that are consistent with the existing development that's currently in the neighborhood. Um, over on that western portion, you'll see some purple boxes, and that's where we envision seeing patio homes. And then the townhomes are located at the intersection of Three Bell and Summerfield Parkway. Again, these are collector roads, and so we look at the townhomes as that opportunity to activate the space to put front doors on those roads instead of, um, large landscape buffers and fence lines. Typically, in general, with planning, we like to see things that are higher density closer to those collector roads, and it allows for that feathering as you move closer to, um, Laramore County space, which is to the south and to the east currently, to let those single family detached homes, uh, be the buffer between. Um, you'll notice that we have a large neighborhood park that's located in the southern portion of the site. Um, we did purposely place that, um, away from the existing neighborhood parks so that we have some good spacing between neighborhood parks in the community. Um, that way, we just don't have them bunched together, and we're making sure that as many of our residents, um, have good access to parks, regardless of where your lot is located. Um, in general, you'll see that there's a large green belt system that is planned throughout the development. This is gonna allow for open space. Um, it'll allow for a robust trail network throughout the development. You'll notice that most of the lots that we're showing here are also backing to green belts as well. There are very few that are back to back lots in this current plan. Um, and again, this is a conceptual sketch plan, but it's giving you the idea of, of what we're looking to achieve in this area. Along the east side, you do see the dash line is the extension of the Pooter Trail. And so we're, we're pretty excited that we'll be able to incorporate that into the plan. Um, we are committed to also including a spur that connects Three Bell Parkway over to the Pooter Trail. Um, so that's kind of a thick black dash line that runs right now along Summerfield Parkway and then kind of down along the edges to connect. Um, it is a conceptual location, and so we'll make sure that there's that east-west connection when we, um, come forward, if this are to be approved tonight. Um, but the idea, the intent is to show that we'd like to provide that connection from Three Bell over to Pooter, which we think would be both a great amenity for this subdivision and also the community as a whole. Okay, let's get into zoning. So the first property, this is the River Pass property, and what we did is we just put two put two little keys for you on here. I know there's been a lot of confusion from everybody tonight about where these are actually located, so hopefully this will help clarify. The zoning map is not that exciting. We are requesting R3 zoning for the River Pass parcel. You'll see it's highlighted on the right-hand side of the screen in the upper corner in red, and so that is the piece that is at Three Bell and River Pass, where we are proposing townhomes or paired villas. And so that R3 zoning would allow us to do that single-family attached product. And you can see just below that on the comp plan that that same square is also highlighted for reference. The Ochsner piece is located right in the middle. So if you look at the top right side, you'll see that it's located in the middle of the townhome portion of the site. Again, below, you can see where the comp plan that you just approved, where that is located. Again, we're asking for R3 zoning there, which would be consistent with the location for the townhomes at the intersection of those two collector streets. And then finally, the Graves piece is the westernmost piece. You'll see in the sketch plan, it, it's the westernmost piece. We did highlight it on the comp plan for you too, just for reference. It was not part of the comp plan, so there was no proposed change for that area. And finally, I will leave you with a picture that is more interesting to look at than a zoning map. But back to the sketch plan, again, just pointing out that the majority of the site is proposed as single-family detached. The bulk of that single-family detached, or a large portion I should say, is landing in the MDR zoning, or the MDR comp plan area. So the intent is not to come forward with a plan that shows, you know, the highest density residential everywhere that there is MDR on the plan. We just think that it's most appropriate to put those townhome opportunities on those corners of the collector streets and then allow that feathering of single-family detached, which is consistent with the rest of the neighborhood as you move south. With that, I will wrap it up, but I would be happy to answer any questions. You guys already know that Dino is here. We also have Stephanie from Northern Engineering if there are any technical questions that may come up. Thank you.
Steph, have we covered everything? B, C, D, and E. Okay. Steph, anything you want to add to that? And then I'm going to open up the public, all right. I suppose I need to have public comment on each item, open and close, although if it's acceptable, I would allow some leeway. I don't really care. So, okay, but, but I technically have to open and close it for each item. Okay. Okay. Do we have anybody signed up, Natalie, for items B, C, D, and E?
Yeah. William, do you still want to speak?
And I'm, and, and again, I'm gonna, I think that was, that was a head nod. It was okay. At this point, anybody can comment on any of these items, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna open it up, public comment on B, item 6B initially. I have to have, I have to open and close public comment separately on each of these, correct? I, I can? So I can open it once and close it once? Okay. We're open. Okay. Yeah, that's what I was asking, but, but for the sake of our audience, they can comment on any, on any of these. Okay. All right. I'm opening public comment on item 6B, the zoning map amendment. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice, for the annexation of the property known as Ochsner. Natalie, do we have anybody signed up for item 6B?
Would you like?
Yeah. And partly because I was in sure.
Same thing.
Yeah. William Jenkins, 5507 Sugarloaf Court. Overall, I would say I am in phase, in favor of the zoning change largely because of the way the sketch plan is laid out. So, and I realize it's just a proposal, and proposals can change. So that's kind of part of the, part of the problem, I guess, is because there's a large section here of MDR that actually is going to be built, sorry, it's MDR, probably R3, that's actually going to be built out as single-family detached R2, and the R3 zone is, is essentially moved over. I like this plan, and I think the only, the only thing is, is that once the zoning is approved, the builder has a right with all this single-family sketch plan to actually go back and make it R3, right? I mean, he's chosen.
Would you like to, Steph, would you like to answer it? Would you like me to toe in?
And that's what's tricky about it, because I-
You're not going to answer the, okay, good. All right. Go ahead, make your comment, and then I'll allow Steph.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. And, and the reason I bring that up, I mean, I love the plan overall. I think it's pretty well thought out. When you get into the specifics of the design, I'll be back to comment on, on those, because I think the proof is in the pudding. When you get down to the details, the details are going to really matter. But my other comment is, I've seen this happen where in Timoth, in Timoth Ranch, where things have changed, the zoning's changed, the density has changed, and it's caused a lot of upset. And there were compromises, and I'm thinking north of Bethke, in that whole area, there've been a lot of changes from what was originally in the plan, how it was zoned, and zoning changes to higher density, et cetera. So I love this sketch plan as it is, and I hope it stays the same. And if it does, I'm totally supportive of this.
Okay. Thank you, William. All right. Dino, Dino, Kristen, same thing.
For this, for this part.
We'll bring you back up here and allow you to offer whatever thoughts you have.
Yeah, I do have comments about the, the now MDR that was CMU, and I don't know if-
Go ahead, go ahead, make that comment now.
Okay. So with regard to that, I'm, the character of the, and I realize the, the plan gives and the zoning will give the developer the right to do whatever the code says they can do there. But to the comments earlier by two board members, to be consistent with the neighborhood or sensitive to the neighborhood, I, I think is going to be really important. The other thing is not so much traffic flow, but, but density. And, and I know you've suggested that, gee, townhomes might be less dense than single-family. It might be. It might also be more dense. You don't really know how that's going to play out, and I'd hate to see a lot of on-street parking overflow from this property because there isn't adequate parking inside. And where I'm thinking a similar thing applies is if you look on Stonefly, we used to have a bike path on the road there on Stonefly next to the apartments. That's all been scratched off, and it's, there's no, no bike path on the roadway there. It's now all street parking. And I drove by there tonight, and it was completely full, which tells me that there wasn't adequate parking designed for that property if you have people parking off-site. So I would be concerned when you get down to the actual design of this, that there's adequate parking for this, for this parcel, for whatever is put in there.
Thank you, William. Natalie, anybody else? Once again, state your name and address, please.
Adrian Rush, 6006 Sunnycrush Drive. I just wanted to comment on some of the things that have been said about the, the opening to the neighborhood or gateway or things like that. I understand their, the visual in their mind, especially near Bethke where the townhomes have been built, and that does kind of feel like an opening to the neighborhood. But in my opinion, that's not really the beginning of the neighborhood, and we have a map that, that cuts it off right there, but you don't see the northern part of that is, you know, a green space, soccer fields, and more homes. And so it, to me, still just feels like a clump of townhomes in a bunch of detached homes. And I know that they've spoken about having the HOA or the Metro District be the ones in charge of keeping all that landscaping and things like that, but there's been plenty of parts of my neighborhood where I see the things that actually bother me are the things that are controlled about the HOA. Large sections of dead grass, dead trees that aren't pulled out, broken sprinklers that are spraying water everywhere. And, you know, maybe it's only my street, but I feel happy about the way my neighbors take care of their yards, and I, I don't have necessarily a problem with a fence backing up to a street like that. I also would like to address the subject of fear. I don't think, if there is fear, like Mr. DiGiulio suggested, I, I can't speak for everyone, but for myself, it is not of the caliber of person that moves into a townhome. I, I've lived in apartment buildings. My husband went through school, and we, same, same as Diane spoke about. And I do believe it's phases of life, so I'm, I'm definitely not worried about the caliber of people moving there, but I still, no matter what's been spoken about traffic, I do worry about traffic. I, I loved his point about cars on the street and facilities that we use feeling overcrowded. Yes, the pool, yes, the, the fitness center, the things that I pay HOA dues for trying to cram as many people in as we can is, is a frustration for me and for a lot of people that live here. And I can't see this kind of a thing going over very well in Wildwing or Harmony where someone just saying, let's stick some townhomes right here, and it'll diversify the neighborhood, and you'll all be happy about it. It's just, there's just a point where we, we had ideas of what we were moving into in the small-town feel, and like I said, it's not necessarily the caliber of people that any of us worry about. It's the crowding and, and the, the feel of that looking like an out-of-place thing is what, is a huge problem for me. And I've never in my life come to a town meeting before, and I have not a politically involved person. And this is, but this is something that means something to me, and I think, I'm speaking for a lot of people in my neighborhood that, that probably feel the same way that I do, that don't necessarily know how to get the point across or feel brave enough to do that. But I think you would find, if people were to come to this, they would feel the same as I do, not necessarily a fear, but a, just a frustration at this, this weird little lump stuck in here that's being called the opening to the neighborhood or the front door or whatever. So, thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. Natalie, we had somebody else back there. Same thing, state your name and address, please, again.
Paige Palmer, 5667 Calgary Street.
Okay. And please, I should, I didn't think I bore mentioning this again, but please try and limit your comments to three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, let's see. I wrote down some thoughts. So I've lived here since 2008 in my same home in Timoth Ranch and Summerfields, where there's been a lot of growth happening, and I've seen a lot of it happen over the last 13-plus years. I think to say statements like cars at townhomes, there might be less, we don't know, is kind of silly, because we don't know. If you drive from here to Summerfields right now, there's a lot of cars on the street. If you drive down my neighborhood in Summerfield, sometimes there's a lot of cars on certain streets too. So I think that's a little silly to say that, well, townhouses might actually be less because they're retired or they're in a different phase of life, because you'll still have families with teenagers in them, and they're all going to have cars probably, or it's a possibility. To, to echo what Adrian said, yes, pool and fitness center and all those things, schools, they're already really full, which is frustrating sometimes. To say that backyards look, could look bad, and you don't know what someone's doing in their backyard, I think is kind of an overgeneralization. Those homes along, what is that, Three Bell, that are, you know, there's backyards and then grass, green space. I don't ever drive down there and think, man, what a garbage dump. I think those, the grass, green space behind them are taken care of by the Metro District. I think they look nice, but they're also, the back, the backyards are not the problem. And then I think to say that people comment and come to meetings out of fear is ignorant and offensive. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. We're going to close public comment on item 6B, the zoning amendment for the annexation of the property known as Ochsner. We'll be reopening, we'll be opening public comment again on the other items. But if anybody did not get everything they needed to say about that, there's another opportunity, but generally, it should be focused on that particular item. So commissioners, I'm going to bring it up here. Who wants to go first? Are there anything on item 6B zoning map amendment?
Well, I have some general things and then some more specific things, so.
Go ahead.
Do we want to just have some comments and then?
Yeah, I don't see problem, Steph. General comments on all, on, on all four of the, all three of these items, remaining items. Go ahead.
So the first thing is, is more a comment, and sorry, I probably won't be very articulate in this, but we have a difficult job, and council has a more difficult job because they have to give the final approvals. But, you know, there, there's a real balance that we have in, you know, what we need to do here, because on one hand, we're running out of irrigated farmland. On the other hand, we want a community that's livable. So in all of this, we, we have to balance, and even Harmony over time has become more dense than there's townhomes. Wildwing, every phase after the original became much more dense. So, anyway, that was just a comment on that. The general questions I have, the first one is, if we approve R3 on any of these, what's the recourse after that? You know, so as far as, do we lose the ability to approve one product and not another?
So I, I will hit on that answer with answering one of Mr. Jenkins' questions as well. So the approval of zoning and then sketch plan sets in place the densities and layout and product type. That, that part is more on the, the sketch plan. The density and product type for a zoning will come forward at preliminary plat, which would be the next step after the sketch plan. So with the zoning, then that tees up the product type and the density, and then the sketch plan then approves that to be within, you know, that bubble or that area that's shown on the sketch plan. So that then kind of sets that in stone at that point. If anything were to change, just like any other sketch plan that we've done, we would have to come back for an amendment in the future. So if the, you know, intent is to no longer do townhomes, or the intent in one of the, you know, areas that's currently zoned R3 where they were showing, you know, single-family detached, if the intent of that is to change, we would have to come back through this process again to have those discussions.
But what if, say, we approved R3 on one of the areas, but we really don't want townhomes? But what if, say, we approved R3 on one of the areas, but we really don't want townhomes, you know, would rather a paired homes? If we approve it as R3, do we then lose that ability to guide that choice?
You can make that as a recommendation, you know, to the developer that, you know, they look at one or the other. But you are correct that with the zoning and then sketch plan, that would give them the flexibility to decide between the two.
Okay.
But you could, you, as kind of on the previous one, you can state your, you know, your thoughts that, you know, look at one or the other.
Yeah. This seems like a good time, dear Jack. I heard, I didn't, I said I was going to give the developer an opportunity to come back up and speak. Dino, is there anything, because that seems like something that is related to something you might offer.
Yeah, I guess.
About your intentions.
Just based on some of the comments and then maybe your comment as well. I think, as I understand it, if we deviate, in staff's opinion, from sketch plan, then we have to resubmit a sketch plan. So I think the discussion that, oh, what if, what if we went to revert it to our MDR comp plan status on the, what is shown, single family detached, and then came in with a bunch of attached housing? I think that they would say, hey, you've varied too far from your sketch plan, you're starting over, you have to bring a new sketch plan back. And I think in the, in the townhome bubble, or I guess, I guess to the R3 bubble, once we know that you're on board with the zoning and the sketch plan in general, we'll come back with the detail within that bubble that I think you'll be pleased with. And everybody in the audience will be notified again and we'll have a chance to have comments on the specifics of the proposed plan. I believe, as I said here today, it'll probably incorporate some of everything. It'll probably incorporate some townhomes, it'll probably incorporate some paired villas, and we'll create, you know, the same quality of development that I think we've shown throughout the master plan. And you'll, you'll be able to question specific aspects of that, but the detail will be more the level that you're seeing on the, on the single family. And that'll be sent, as I understand it right, to all the APO affected property owners and everybody will have a chance to comment again.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah.
Yes?
I have a list.
Okay, go ahead.
In regard to traffic, so this is to staff, I guess, is, you know, each one of these individually said the impact on traffic is going to be minimal, which is not really the case. So do we, do we have an estimate of, you know, we should know what our current traffic is at full buildout? What do we think the impact would be? And kind of related to that is, you know, what does the egress look like? Because, you know, familiar with the neighborhood and I think there's probably two egress points?
Well, you got, you've got Three Bell and you got...
Twin Bridge.
Twin Bridge, and then goes out, they'll be, yeah, it will, we'll get to talk about Folsom a little bit later, that will go out to ultimately to Latham. But to answer your question, you know, pointedly, Marty, it's, you know, we've got an overall traffic study that was done for the entire development. They'll have to come forward with an additional traffic study associated with this. And what my anticipation is, is that we're going to get that and it's going to show that there's plenty of capacity in all the roads for the densities that they're showing. Now, there was a lot of conversation, a little bit of conversation about parking on streets. Some of these streets allow parking and some of them don't. So we'll, we will get that when the development gets farther along. But right now, we don't have any, anything submitted relative to traffic yet, but we will.
Okay. All right, these are always a little bit hard because the details to come may influence the decisions today. Another general question, just water for all of this. I know the Water District, you know, has approved this and everything, but do we anticipate any issues with, you know, one is they have enough taps to fill this whole thing and pressures and things like that?
Yeah. We, did we get a will serve from the districts yet?
Correct.
Okay. So we meet with these districts on a regular basis, monthly. And so all these developments are vetted with them long before they come to you. We've known about it, we've looked at the system with the districts. I don't anticipate any issues with the water or the sewer associated with this. It's well in line with the master plans that have been approved.
Okay, thanks. And then kind of being a bottom line person, and I think this may be a question for you, is if we look at this as single family homes 100% versus where you're proposing townhomes, bottom line, how many more are you, you know, what's the difference in number of units?
Single family densities probably end up three, between three and four. And the townhome densities will approach eight, but you have to be less than eight, between seven and eight. So for every acre of attached, you're three to four units more per acre. I think we've got 18, is it 18 acres in that townhome section? I think there's probably, are you just talking about the orange or the purple and the orange? 18 acres in the orange, there's about, is it six in the? Seven, okay, let's call it seven. So 25 acres, so 75 to 100 more units.
Total.
Total. Yeah, we're not talking, you know, there's, someone brought up Stonefly. I think those apartments are, are they at 30 an acre? There, I know they're between 20 and 20.
They're at 18.
18, okay, so we're about half of that.
Yeah, and the whole Stonefly situation, and I don't want to get into it now, but it's a completely, it's an anomaly because the road condition now is a transient situation. When, when the development south of that finishes development, 3F will not, it will not be connected to 3F. There will be a cul-de-sac at the end to that. And so it's a, it's a transient situation that we...
Temporary, yeah.
Marty, just to, just to head it on, on your question from that same point, the, if the property were to develop all as single family residential, single family detached, I should say, based on the acreage, there would be, you know, an allowance for 640 units just on single family density, single family detached density. Sewer district actually has a cap for this property on that. So even if it were to develop as single family detached, the density that they're requesting would still be achievable.
Tom?
Yeah, I think, you know, you heard some of my comments before. A question, there's a slightly different color and shape of houses in the Graves property. Is that single family or is that multifamily housing there? I can't tell.
You know, it's just a conceptual, but the idea was patio, a little patio home project, but all detached, so single family detached. But the idea was a, perhaps a patio home project, just another, another product type.
Great. I think in concept, I'm still concerned about the higher density. And certainly of the 80 or so homes that I drive by on Three Bell and River Pass, there's not too many backyards that look horrible. And I think another part of that is if you have an HOA landscaper that takes care of all the backyards, that adds to the monthly fees and it starts to make those homes, from a cash flow standpoint, unaffordable because they have to pay fees as well as mortgage. So I worry about that and I don't know that that's, that should be a factor in how we make this decision. Those are all the questions I've got.
Randy? Lisa?
I guess one question that I have, you know, we always say that the traffic studies show that their capacity can be handled and yet traffic is a problem, particularly as we have traffic going Harmony heading east or heading west and going over. Where is the disconnect coming on that? I mean, every traffic that, every traffic says, study says, yeah, we can handle it, it's fine, it's fine, it's fine. Nobody likes traffic here, it's a mess. Why is this a problem?
Okay, so I think, I think you conflated two things. So Harmony Road is a completely different subject. Okay, so if you want to talk about Harmony Road, that's 85... Excuse me?
A lot of that's C dot.
Yeah, a lot of it's C dot, but also 85% if not more of that traffic comes outside of Timoths. What we're talking about here relative to the traffic studies we're considering on this development is associated with the development and its surrounding infrastructure and in and out. When you get to Harmony, you've got a completely different animal that you have to work with. So I'll stop there. And if you're, if you're asking about Harmony, it's a different discussion.
Okay. So the studies that you're talking about then are only relative to getting traffic in and out of these neighborhoods to Harmony.
To Harmony.
That's where that study begins and ends.
It does. It does also consider the Harmony situation, okay? But it's, it takes into consideration in the larger context of Harmony Road. And when there are peaks and when I-25 is under construction and when there are issues like that, that's when you get the backups on Harmony that are, seem to be untenable. Okay. And, and some of this, you know, we experienced some of this this year with the closure of, you know, the overpass over, yeah, that really caused us problems. In addition to that, we had Whitechill issues and Frontage Roads issues. I don't want to get off the tangent, but I, but I do want to show the differences between Harmony and what we're dealing with in each one of these developments.
Okay, thank you. And then this is something that's just a general comment because I can't really, according to our chairperson, I really can't respond or ask some of the audience on this. But I think that is something that we as commissioners can look, is that the property that is north up on River Pass and then the one that is down, the Oshner one, we can look at them as two different, they are two different line items. You know, we can look at the one up that is further north and approve or not approve that rezoning. So we have, we don't have to lump them all in together. And so I just want to make that comment that it is possible to talk about some of these density issues as two different entities. And as we look at what's happening in the south portion, that's almost like you've got a clean slate because that is very much, you're building that out as, as a brand new build or the second phase of the south build. And so that's just a comment to my fellow commissioners.
You can comment on that.
Go ahead, Dino.
I think, I think the overall perspective is important and, you know, there's 375 acres here. And even, even if we achieve our capped density based on sewer, which, which I believe will be under that, we're not, we're not attempting to hit the 630 units. But even if we do, we're, we're at three units an acre on this entire project, which is really low. I mean, I mean, most projects, new projects that start today are five units plus per acre. So it, I guess, for some perspective, that is very low density and really in today's world is not thought of as great planning anymore. I mean, the density is important to achieve affordability and, and be able to get services to people. So, so three units per acre, it's very low.
To give a little context, the city of Fort Collins minimum density is five units per acre.
And Lisa, to touch on a point that you and Marty also talked about with traffic, and Don had mentioned it slightly, with this development will be the continuation of Folsom Parkway out to Latham Parkway. So that will be another new ingress/egress collector street to this development, not just this portion, but also the rest of Timoths South and Timoths Ranch that doesn't exist today. It'll be associated with this development.
You've also opened, what's the name of the street that?
Wheatfield, Wheatfield is a new one up in Timoths Ranch.
That's been a welcome egress route from there as well.
It'd be a similar situation with Folsom for this one.
But the widening of Latham and the connection to Colorado Boulevard down south, is there any time, our plans on that?
It's under discussion right now with the town of Windsor and Laramie County, and Weld County.
And this development, depending on the traffic study, will have to do any approvals needed for Latham Parkway, turn lanes or anything that is determined by the traffic study.
Great.
Any further comments? We're, right now, for the record, we're just considering item 6B. Staff, anything else? Dino, anything else to add? Okay. So... Put your microphone on, please.
Can you move or put the map up of 6B? Just to ground ourselves in what we're approving here. And the reason I say that is the sketch plan kind of over, you know, it has a pretty broad area outside of this that's marked, is that, so it's just this piece?
Correct.
Okay. Now, staff, we need to vote, correct, on 6B individually. We're, I know we have to vote individually on these, and then I'm going to open public, public comment in case anybody has anything further to say on the remaining items, correct, Kevin Clark? Okay. All right. At this point, I need a motion on item 6B, the zoning map amendment for the annexation of the property known as Oshner. Do I have a motion on that item?
Motion to approve item 6B.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Let's have a roll call vote again, please.
Chairperson Phil Goldstein.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Marty Jost.
Yes.
Commissioner Lisa Baird.
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Wood.
Yes.
Alternate Jeremy Holt. Alternate Wendy Nuland.
Yes.
Very good. Item 6B is approved on a 5-0 vote. Item 6C, the Timoths South rezoning. Open public comment on this. Do we have anybody additional that would like to speak on this or items in general? Okay, hearing none. I'm closing. William, I'd be doing a disservice not to, I just opened public comment on item 6C, the Timoths South rezoning. Did you have any additional comments? Okay, do you want to pull that up, please? That's it, that is it.
Yep.
That is it. Okay.
Three minutes, no more than three minutes, William.
No, I'll be much shorter. Again, William Jenkins, 5507 Sugarloaf Court. The only two things that I haven't said, one, I really like the trail addition that was mentioned. I think that's a real positive, both for the community that's planned as well as the rest of the town. I think it's wonderful. The other point is that intersection is a bit of a problem and it's going to get worse with the development across the street, this development and the other development that's proposed further south. People run that stop sign all the time, including when people are in the crosswalk. So when you do your, your traffic study, and I've also talked to Timoth Police, Timoth Policeman about that particular intersection, and he said, that's where I get all my stop sign runners. I used to get lots of tickets there. He's now at Timoth High School as an SRO. But that is a dangerous intersection and there are a lot of kids that ride bikes and people riding bikes. And when that trail gets put through, it's going to see more pedestrian traffic and more bicycle traffic. And that's a dangerous intersection now and it's going to get more dangerous unless something's done about it. And I don't know what the solution is, but people don't stop there. And I'm... what the solution is, but people don't stop there. And I'm right on the, I'm right on the corner. My backyard looks out at that. And I do a lot of outdoor gardening, and I see people running that stop sign in all four directions all the time.
Thank you, William. Anybody else comment on this particular item? Okay, we're closing public comment on the item six C, the Timoth South rezoning. Commissioners, questions, comments on this particular item that have not been brought up along with the other items? Lisa?
Oh. Mine is just basically a comment. I'm not in favor of the R three. I'd be in favor, obviously, we've already looked at the comp plan and, you know, changed the comp plan designation of it. But I would like to see it not go into townhomes and go something less dense and more in line with the other properties around it. So that's just a comment.
Okay. And when we get around to a vote, if you object to the zoning, then you can note that for the record for council.
Tom? Again, point of order, if we make a recommendation on this, can we make a recommendation for approval with the designation being R two instead of R three?
We would have to vote on that, correct, staff? First, I'd see if the commissioners want to move it forward with a condition, that would, this would be a condition.
Yes.
Not a recommendation. Correct?
So the comp plan designation of MDR does allow for R two, R three, and R mu. So that is one of the condition that is something that you can make a recommendation on because that is one of the allowable uses. But with that, you will have to cite the comp plan as that is your, that is your recommendation that they do. And then, as Phil had mentioned, that condition would have to be voted on by the others to be the one that moves forward.
Okay, so with that, and this is the appropriate item upon which to make that, and it would be a condition. Okay, so we need to discuss, and ultimately, we would have to vote on this prior to voting on the item as a whole, correct?
Correct. Because if that condition doesn't pass, then that condition is.
Okay. Well, I for one have no, I don't have a problem with the R three designation. So, but discussion on this particular, Tom's question of whether or not we would attach this condition. Marty?
I guess if the sentiment is, you know, basically, it sounds like the sentiment is, you know, you're uncomfortable with the townhomes because, you know, just fitting in, which I agree with. So it seems to me there's two ways to go about it. One is the R two designation, the other is, and you have to tell me if this is allowable, R three with the condition or recommendation, essentially a recommendation to council that it be designated as paired homes rather than townhomes.
You could do that on the sketch plan.
On the sketch plan?
Correct.
Okay.
Because the sketch plan in that area calls out for paired homes or townhomes. And your recommendation could be a condition of approval that it be paired homes and not townhomes on the sketch plan.
Because that, it seems a little bit, you know, it seems like a better fit than, to me, anyway, my, you know, just looking at this of.
And what we're considering, crack me if I'm wrong, we're considering at this point, we're only considering Tom requesting a condition be attached to the approval of this, or denial of the, well, would be the denial, approval of this, that it be limited to R three, R two.
Right. Yeah, what I'd like to do is make the motion that we.
I'm just, I'm asking for discussion, first of all, on this item. Okay, so.
And that's where I was getting to. There's two ways to go about it. I think one is, you know, the R two designation, but then you, I think you lose the ability to do paired homes. Or, you know, but that would have to go on the sketch plan. Or we do, like you say, you know, with the R two designation, I guess, you know, you'd lose the ability to do paired homes.
Right. I think rather than have the developer go through a sketch plan and then have to revise it and go back and forth, we should make it a decision now on, is it R two or R three? And that way, they don't have to, save them a whole bunch of work to revise sketch plans over and over again.
So let me just clarify one thing. Paired homes are allowed in R two. It's just the density difference, four units or eight units per acre. Attached single family is allowed in both districts. It's just, at this point, it's a density difference between either a maximum of eight or a maximum of four.
And I think that maximum of four is the intent here.
Dino, I have a feeling you might offer some thoughts on this.
Well, I would encourage you to let us come forth with our plan. And you have the ability to deny the plan once you see the details. But I think there's so much more to it than density. And any product type can be done poorly or done well. And so I think you could get another bite at the apple when we come back with green belts, product type elevations. And you're going to see, if you don't like it, you can turn it down.
All right, I'm going to proceed. And then, staff, if I'm proceeding in error, what I believe what we need now is a motion, and it would have to come, I presume, come from Tom, a motion to attach a condition to this item that this be approved only as R two, not as R three. First, I'm asking if you want to make that as a motion to attach that condition?
Yes, I would.
You want to, okay. Now we need to see if we have a second on that, on that to limit this to R two. Do I hear, I don't hear a second.
Well, I'm thinking, sorry. Just to answer the last point, though, just to verify that if we approve this with no conditions, yes, you know, subsequent submissions, we can approve or deny. But if we approve this one, it becomes an allowable use, so we lose some flexibility.
That's where I'd mention, you can, on the sketch plan, you can make the recommendation that it be paired homes and not townhomes.
We can't go back to single family homes.
Okay, hold on a second. We have a motion on the floor. That's okay. I don't have a problem with you asking that question. Dino?
I just have a question. If I don't want R two zoning, can I just keep C two zoning and come back with a mixed-use project?
Is that a rhetorical question? Are you?
Well, we're asking for a downzone either way. I don't, I don't, I don't want to downzone two notches. I'm, I was going to downzone one notch, but if we're downzoning two notches, then I can't do what I can do now. I think I can do it better with R three zoning than I can do with C two zoning. And that might be a question for staff.
It is a question for staff.
I mean, he has the ability to pull an application if he sees fit.
Okay, first, I think, I think we need to consider the motion on the floor.
There was no second.
And we have no second at this point, correct?
Yep. It does die for a lack of second.
Correct, which is where I was headed. We don't have a second on that. So now we're back to the original consideration. Item six C, Timoth South rezoning. Commissioner, any other comments?
Dino, can I ask you a question? So you mentioned that you'd like to show us a little bit more about, you know, what you've got in mind. Where does that fall in the process, staff? We have to, we have to address the zoning issue tonight, right? So we have to do that. If we approve the R three, that's where you want to be. Obviously, we've got some concerns here. Is there any way we can slow this down and maybe come back in, you know, our next meeting and you show us a little bit more so we have a little more time to consider it? Or do we have to make this decision tonight on the zoning?
You would have to.
I don't want to, I don't want to table it and put it off, but I don't want to make a wrong decision either. And we don't want to box anybody into a corner.
So the option, you hit the option that would be out there, would be to table it.
And then at that time, can the developer come back and then say, okay, we are applying, but we're going to give you a little more information to make a decision?
So without knowing exactly what information you would be looking for, it would be a little premature. If you're looking for, you know, architectural design or something like that, that would be a little premature at this time. The preliminary plat would, that would be coming in after a sketch plan would give you more of an idea of this, you know, what the layout would look like, what, you know, open space would look like, you know, things like that, if that's what you're looking for.
I think for me personally, what I'm looking at particularly as I look at this visual here and then listening to all the comments of, you know, the residents, is that they visualize something that's going to be, you know, oh gee, we've got all these single-family residents, and then boom, here's townhomes. And it's just not going to be aesthetically pleasing. It's not going to be a nice continuum of the community that's already there. It may not fit. It may not flow. And I guess I look at it as, you know, you don't want to put a spin on it where you're convincing everybody, but on the other hand, you want buy-in so that you feel like, okay, we're working on this together. And you're going to get what you want. We're going to get, the community's going to get what they want. I mean, I hear people's concerns. You know, you look at the thing that is directly north, and you've got that nice open area, and you've got single-family homes with back fences. That's not unappealing. And you've got plenty of room there to put a nice signage that says this is the Timoth South. So I don't know, you know, would tabling allow us the ability to, but I know you obviously don't go into the point of plating and sketching and all that kind of stuff, because that's a whole lot of time and expense on your time that is going down a rabbit hole.
Well, yeah, tabling's never a good, I mean, yes, no is better than maybe, honestly. And I, it's always interesting to hear that these things where, you know, people come in and say, hey, you've done a really good job on everything you've done, but we're afraid you're really going to screw this up and the front door of your project. And so I'm not quite sure how to respond to that. I wouldn't do something that's not just as good as everything else we've done out there. That's counterintuitive. It's against my own interest. But that always seems to be the concern.
Okay.
And so, you know, we come with the same team that's built the whole project, saying we think that we can do something there that's better than 6,000 square foot single-family lots. It's not, it's not a money-driven thing, quite honestly. It, if, you know, sometimes I almost want to acquiesce at meetings like this, because, okay, we'll do, we'll do single-family lots, but, you know, but there's, there's 2,000 people in our neighborhood, and we're hearing from seven. And I get feedback all the time, and I try to describe what we're trying to do up there. And everybody's like, yeah, that sounds really great. And it's, and I, and the projects that I've done in the past, you know, the townhomes at Stetson Creek, Harvest Park, we did some fantastic townhomes. I think the townhome project in Harmony Club is excellent.
It is.
You know, and, and, and so I know I used a word fear that kind of, you know, people responded to. I do think it's fear. And I'm not saying it's fear of the people. It's fear of this word townhome, you know, that what's it going to be? And, and it really can be more creative, much more creative than 6,000 square foot lots that are just, there's not much you can do with them. And you can't do any, any vertical movement with the elevations, because it's one structure detached, whereas townhomes are attached. And you can, and so it's not a, it's not a profit thing. But I guess I would say, you know, make the recommendation. And if, if the town board agrees, then, then, then that's what I have to do. And we'll do the best we can with a, with a single-family detached product. And it's not going to be ugly. We're not going to make it bad. But I believe we can make it better with, with the flexibility granted by the R three zoning. And I think we could do something great with the C two zoning, too. But there's some, there are some issues of that that make it cumbersome. And there, I don't think the commercial uses are viable.
Okay.
Do you want, go ahead. Go ahead, and I'm going to ask if you want to make a motion.
That's what I was going to say, you know, path forward.
No, I'm prepared to make a motion.
You know, do we do the approval or denial on R three, and then with the sketch plan, give the recommendation? Because just to, you know, kind of, I had to remind myself, we're a recommending body.
Right.
So our approval or denial is just the recommendation. So we put it, we put it to council, and that gives them more time to kind of paint that vision to the council.
I move we approve the rezoning to R three.
Okay, so you do, you do, do not want to make a motion to table?
Nope, I move we approve to R three.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve the rezoning. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Natalie, may we have a roll call?
Chairperson Phil Goldstein?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Marty Jost?
Yes.
Commissioner Lisa Baird?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Wood?
I'm going to vote no. And the reason is, I think this really needs to be R two.
Staff, you got that noted? Okay.
Alternate Jeremy Holt?
Alternate Wendy Nuland?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries on a four or one vote with the no vote objection of Commissioner Wood noted. Very good. Okay, on to item six D, the Graves rezoning. Okay, we've heard all the information. I'm going to open public comment on item six D, the Graves rezoning. Do we have anybody sign up specifically for that? Or anybody that did not, that would like to sign up to speak on this item before my voice gives out? No? Okay, I'm going to close public comment on item six D. Bring it up here. Commissioners, questions, comments on item six D, Graves rezoning. Other commissioners, questions? Item six D. Okay. With that, do I have a motion on item six D, the Graves rezoning?
Motion to approve item six D.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Natalie?
Chairperson Phil Goldstein?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Marty Jost?
Yes.
Commissioner Lisa Baird?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Wood?
Yes.
Alternate Jeremy Holt?
Alternate Wendy Nuland?
Yes.
Motion carries on item six D, the Graves rezoning on a five oh vote. And lastly, the item six C, the Timoth South sketch plan. Do we have anybody, I'm going to open public comment on this item. Anybody signed up specifically on this? Or anybody wishes to speak on the sketch plan specifically? Very good. I'm going to close public comment on this. And commissioners, discussion, further discussion on item six C, the Timoth South sketch plan.
My only question slash concern with this one is, I've mentioned it before, the, in the sketch plan, the area marked as townhomes is way beyond what we just approved.
Correct, yes.
So is that, I know it's a general map.
You can make a recommendation.
Okay. It would be good to have that reflect what it really, you know, what was approved.
Show the outline of the Ochsner property.
Yeah, because it's not townhomes outside of that, right?
It is.
It is.
Oh, it is.
Yep. It's for that whole bubble.
Okay. Because that was, outside of that was already designated R three?
Yes, outside of that was already designated as R three.
Sorry, I missed that.
So, Penny, anything else?
No.
No, okay. Lisa?
Is that an existing?
Put your microphone on, please.
Is that an existing pond below the townhome area?
No, that's just a.
No, that's just a conceptual pond location. We know we're gonna need some additional detention in there.
Okay.
So we'll come back, it obviously won't look like that, it'll incorporate into the final site plan and plat.
Okay, thank you.
Tom? Yeah, I think that having townhomes here gives you the opportunity to make this year splash in terms of the corner of Summerfield and Three Bell. And if, if you wanted to really jazz up the, the intersection there, this is a great opportunity to do it rather than the one further north. I also really like the trail in the corner, I like the idea, the concept of patio homes over near the, the corner. I am a little bit concerned about the ditch company that, that owns a couple of barns over there. If you'll talk about a trashy backyard, that's probably the worst in the neighborhood. And if, if we can do anything to screen that appropriately or influence the ditch company, which may not be easy, that would be, that would be a great addition. But overall, I, I think this is a great sketch plan and I would vote in favor of it.
Thank you.
Wendy, anything?
No.
Okay. Anybody else, other comments on the Graves re-zoning item 6D?
Yeah, just to, I guess, full disclosure, you know, the, the patio home component is, is conceptual right now, it's, it's allowed as, it's considered, I think, a single-family detached product type. I haven't totally committed to it in my, in my head and still studying the, the marketability of it, I just want you to know that as you're, as you're voting, because it's, it really is no different than single-family detached, but, but the, the professionals that helped me are really in favor of it and, and they're swaying me pretty hard cuz they're smarter than I am at this stuff, but I just wanted to disclose that, I suppose, that that hasn't been final decided.
Might be a good option for the other parcel as well.
Yeah.
Okay, other, any other comments? Okay, do I have a motion on item 6, 6C, the Timneth South Sketch Plan?
Were we going to do that through the recommendation to council?
That is if you wanna make that as a, as a recommendation or a condition?
So is that part of the motion though?
In which case you just make a note of that.
At that point, that would be a note of that to council.
I don't have a problem with it if, if it's a recommendation. I mean, if it's a, a comment.
About the recommendation.
A recommendation, yeah, if we're not, it's not a condition.
Correct.
That we're attaching, in which case we'd need, again, a separate vote. Okay. Everybody, I have a head nod on that, are we okay? Okay. Yeah, why don't you, why don't you restate that, please?
I believe what we talked about is a recommendation that.
We call it the River Pass parcel.
Thank you. That that be paired homes rather than townhomes. Yeah.
Something in keeping with the, the nature of the neighborhood, whether that's patio homes, paired homes, or something closer to single-family homes, that would certainly be my recommendation.
Do you know any further thoughts on that?
Well, I'd, I'd encourage you to let us come forth with something and if, if, if I don't find the right builder on this, I'm not gonna put garbage up there. So if, if I don't find the right product in the townhome and, and builder, we'll, we'll come back even with the R3 zoning and probably ask to do single-family detached. It's not my first choice, but if, it's gotta be the right product and, and if I can't find the right partner for it, we won't do it.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess I, well, I'll, I'm gonna interject something, I, I'm not certain that, that I concur, I, I don't have a problem if it's, if it's a notation to council that one or more commissioners mentioned that, but it's not unanimous, I don't necessarily agree that it, that it be, first of all, we're not making it a condition, but I don't necessarily agree that the developer will be bound by that in any way. I, I agree that they, that Mr. Tulio should come back with something. And so I, I don't, I don't know that I want a unanimous recommendation. So I think you can phrase it.
We can, we can put it in there.
We have two or three head nods on it, you can phrase it that.
That each commissioner, we can list each commissioner that have that recommendation.
So who, who concurs, is that, we're.
I think, I think for the purpose, I think for the purpose of relaying that recommendation, it would be good to have like a little head nod or something for who agrees with that recommendation.
Okay, this head is not nodding.
Okay, so we got Marty and, and Tom. Okay.
All right, we're good with that?
Yep.
Okay, all right, so I think we're back, we have not voted on this one, correct?
Nope.
Okay, thanks. Item 6E, it is getting late, somebody order out for a pizza, please. Item 6E, Timneth South Sketch Plan, do I have a motion on this item? We have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second. Natalie?
Chairperson Phil Goldstein.
Yes.
Vice chairperson Marty Jost.
Yes.
Commissioner Lisa Baird. Commissioner Tom Wood.
Yes.
Alternate Wendy Nuland.
Good, the motion carries on a five oh vote with the notation of the two commissioners. Okay, that concludes.
All right.
Everything with you, Dino, thanks.
Thank you.
We're patient, Kristen, the rest of your team.
When, when we, we come back, we'll have mockups and elevations and, and a lot of detail and, and hopefully we'll, we'll be able to convince you. But if we don't get something good, we won't come with it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'd like to take a, no more than about a minute and a half, two-minute break here if we could, please. Thank you. Thank you. Adjourned here. I don't think we unadjourned.
We're unadjourned.
Did we? We unadjourned. Okay. Reconvened here, okay. Item, excuse me. Item 6F, Red Barn Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Chad?
Thank you, Chairperson. So tonight's meeting is unique in that we do have a second comprehensive plan amendment under review here. So item 6F is the Red Barn Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This application for a property of 38434 County Road 13, which is currently an uncorporated Weld County. The property is currently owned by 5258 Ryan Ranch LLC, represented by Ed Holloway and Derek Hoffmeister. The applicant is Ripley Design, represented by Claude Russo. So the subject property is located east of and adjacent to Latham Parkway and directly east of Wildwing Community Park. All adjacent properties surrounding this parcel to the northeast and south are also owned by 5258 Ranch LLC. The existing future land use designation for this property and the talent in this 2020 comprehensive plan is rural residential. The applicant is proposing to amend the town's comprehensive plan designation from that RR designation to commercial mixed use to allow for the proper zoning for the use of a coffee shop with drive-through. Per the comprehensive plan, the allowable zoning districts under the CMU designation are commercial mixed use and community commercial. Upon review of the comprehensive plan's goals and objectives, staff finds that the application to be in general compliance with the comprehensive plan. Through those findings upon review, we determined that there are more goals and objectives found in the plan that support the change than not. Some of those being striving for a balance between residential and non-residential development that maintains the community character, encouraging mixed-use development that incorporates the ability to live, workshop, play in a walkable environment. Again, there are other goals and objectives within that comprehensive plan that any project, regardless of type, need to meet. And there are goals and objectives that do not apply to this area of town or type of use. There was a neighborhood meeting required for this application. The meeting was held on August 16 at the Town Center. There were approximately 16 individuals in attendance, and their comments, along with the applicant's response, was in that packet. Just a little background or context. The next steps for this, since it is in uncorporated Weld County, depending on the outcome of the application, they would need to annex to the town and then go through the site plan process. Similar to the six, item 6A, due to the nature of the requests in the various alternative positions and interpretations of the goals and objectives presented by the comprehensive plan, staff is seeking guidance on a motion to whether they would forward favorable recommendation to Town Council or one with denial. And I will turn it over to Clark.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Do I speak up just a little bit, please?
I've lost my voice tonight. And I didn't even speak.
Sympathize.
Thank you, Mr. Kemper. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Claude Zo. I'm with Ripley Design, representing applicant team tonight. I am joined by Mr. Derek Hoffmeister and Mr. Ed Holloway behind me. So we're here to answer the questions you might have. Today, we would like to share our vision for this property. I want to share our vision for Red Barn Coffee. And then also ask for a recommendation for land use approval. Chad touched on a lot of these. I'll try make this concise. We are still in the very beginning phases of this proposal. We are here asking for a comprehensive plan amendment. We have undergone a few rounds of review. We have hosted our neighborhood meeting on August 18. We are looking ahead to going to council. And then, once we have concluded the con-plan amendment process, we will be subject to annexation and site plan review. And really quick, I think it's just kind of important to note that when the comprehensive plan and the land use code was adopted, it was envisioned that there might be these instances where a modification may be warranted. And so there have been criteria that are set forth. And our proposal has been found to comply with three of them. These are kind of outlined in the packet that you received. Breasing through these, Chad, thank you. You already went through all of this. So our site is located directly east of Wildwing Park and Wildwing subdivision, currently located in Weld County. It is about half a mile from the intersection of Prospect Road and then 4.2 miles from Old Town. Zooming up on the site a little bit, the parcel we're looking at is 2.6 acres. It's mostly vacant with some remaining agricultural buildings on it. It's located along Latham Parkway, which eventually will be a two-lane principal arterial with an attached bike lane and a detached sidewalk. And then what's kind of unique about our site is Wildwing Park. That's directly to the west, which is kind of one of the driving sort of catalysts to our vision. It also provides a really nice quarter-mile buffer between our property and the adjacent single-family. Framework map, that's us. You know, at the end of the arrow, we are situated right inside the rural residential land use. And we're proposing a commercial mixed use. You might ask why? CMU supports a coffee shop with a drive-through option. So that's why we're asking for that. And I think that's probably a good segue for our vision and talking about that a little bit. So the applicants here, the idea struck as they were attending a family, a local youth soccer game at Wildwing Park and noticed there was nowhere to grab a cup of coffee, water, lunch. And then there was this Red Barn. So that's kind of the catalyst for Red Barn Coffee. The building, the existing building was built in the 1920s. And the future commercial building will mimic the historical building in design and intent. And so we've included some images here, sort of what's inspiring the design. The future building will contain a kitchen, dining areas, family-oriented spaces, and will, again, mimic the original building in scale and design intent. A drive-through option will also be provided. It is the goal of the owners to create a uniquely Timneth experience and to hold space where community can be fostered. We would also like to share with you our conceptual site plan. So our team has done some due diligence to understand exactly what can fit on the site. And so this is a quick sketch we've been thinking about that demonstrates how parking, buffering, stacking, that kind of stuff can be accommodated on this 2.6-acre parcel. We wanted to make sure that it's vetted and that it can be compatible with the land use and that standards are met. We also wanted to share our conceptual building model with you all. So as you can see, or maybe if you can think back to an earlier slide where I had the shot of the existing barn, this is almost an exact replica of that. So we have the existing barn with the shed structure kind of attached to that that will house the coffee shop. It's very important that the agricultural identity of this area be reflected in that design. And to end off, I just want to reiterate where we are in the process. Of course, getting the con-plan amendment is really important. Without that, we can't really move forward with our vision. So, yeah, we thank you for your time and review on this. And we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, we have an opportunity for public comment. I don't believe there's anybody here left to offer any public comment. So I will open and close the public comment on this and bring it up here to the Commissioners. Who would like to go? Let's mix this up. Wendy, anything?
Are we allowed to ask the name? What was the name?
Claude.
No, I mean, the name of this business.
I was just kidding. What was the name of this Red Barn Coffee?
Tom?
Yeah, I love your presentation. Thank you. This is probably more complete, and I like the timeline showing us where you're at. This is really great. The only concern I have, there is future widening of Latham Road scheduled. And I believe there's a big utility easement. They may put a water line down the road. Was there taken into account when you built the driveway?
Yes. Yeah.
So there's more than enough room for the Thornton water line to go up through there?
Yes, we are anticipating the widening of the right-of-way and the setbacks that go along with that and the utility easement.
Great.
That all fits.
If you've got that plan, then it looks like you've got everything covered. I like it.
Lisa?
You, to confirm, you'd be tearing down the old barn?
It's already gone.
Oh, it is already gone?
Yeah, that's correct. In a structural analysis of the existing barn, it was found that it's not totally safe. So we're replicating it pretty much the exact same footprint or similar, close to footprint.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
My only concern is, obviously, this is kind of stuck out there as an island, a commercial island. I mean, there's nothing else out there. And if we approve this change in the con-plan, then we are opening up, you know, commercial use for that area. It's kind of like, you know, you do it once, you get to do it again and again and again. The property owner owns all the property around this, correct?
That's correct.
And so you're just wanting to do this on this portion of your property?
That is correct.
Do we see any? Here it comes. Tell us what you're thinking.
Yes, we own from 76 or 78 North for three-quarters of a mile. We have 180 acres in the total package of land that we've... And I think it's in 11 different parcels.
Okay.
And the concept, as you can see right here, it really is what they don't... There's some other things. Before we tore down the barn, we went through and scavenged every piece of whatever we could of wood and whatnot from the old barn siding and stuff. And then we have two cupolas that doesn't show up here that they'll be going back on the barn. Your answer on setbacks. We moved the structure back another 60 to 65 feet to give us plenty of room for any expansion and utilities and whatnot, which is getting very crowded through Latham, as you know. The... The other thing is that we're going to keep it rural. We're going to have a corral off to one side, which you can't see. We'll have a donkey, horses, goats, and a few chickens. And we're going to maintain a really country feel to the whole project. That's what we're really looking for. And there has been no economic study whatsoever. So, and all the funding is personal. So we're... Fit into the rural part of what Timneth is doing. I'm a resident... I'm sorry, I guess I'm Ed Holloway, 3892 Tayside Court, Timneth. We really felt it fit in with what Timneth is trying to do in some other areas, which they don't have very many possibilities to do. And we're really hoping to keep the barn. But once we dug into it and found out it wasn't square, it wasn't safe, a few other things, then we decided that we'd go to the replica of it. And I think it's going to be a really nice addition to Timneth. Like you said, it's two and a half miles off of Harmony. And it's just going to be a unique... It's really going to enhance your park, I think. Because there are no amenities for those young kids out there and moms and dads and grandpas and grandmas and whoever else comes to watch. They're stuck there. And at least this way, they can come over and get a cup of coffee, sit out and listen to music or whatever we have out on the patios and go from there. So that's the whole vision of the project.
Thank you.
Marty?
Just a quick question. The house that's adjacent to it, that's unoccupied now or?
It's currently being remodeled. It's going to be our corporate office where myself and Derek will be residing. And so we'll be on property along with the coffee shop going forward.
Okay, and one question that's off-topic. If you don't want to answer it, that's fine. I live out there. The foundation that's going in beside the loafing ship, is that a house or wood?
Oh, that's... That's another individual who owns that two acres.
Oh, okay, I thought you were...
And it's going to be one very nice structure because we have architectural control over that. And it'll be a nice addition to that whole area. I forgot they started construction.
Couple of questions for staff. I understand, what I understand, that if, for some reason, Timneth did not annex this, Windsor or Severance could do the same and...
No, it's within our growth management area.
It's within, and it's subject to the agreement.
Correct.
The formal agreement, okay. And...
Yeah, we have an IGA with Weld County, Severance, and Windsor.
That's what I... Okay, that's what I thought. And so, and of course, and it's rather moot point to my question, but it's also then subject to our higher standards than probably theirs would be as far as the appearance. And I understand there's going to be a turning lane for this as well?
There wouldn't be necessarily a turn lane. We have to get into the more specifics at site plan and further on.
Okay, that could come up at that time.
But yeah, the site wouldn't have to go through our requirements, you know, design, things like that. Weld County actually probably wouldn't have the appetite for development like this on this parcel.
That's where I was headed, and that's why I think it belongs in Timneth, certainly. It is nice. I appreciate, I think we all appreciate the fact that you're essentially presenting this thing end-to-end, the site plan as well, even though that's not part of the consideration. But that's always very helpful to see everything. And then is there, and again, I realize this will be, this will come up subsequent stages. Right now, as you look at it, there's sufficient parking, and it would be far enough off the road that there wouldn't be the issue. I know Fort Collins has that issue with, is it a Starbucks on College Avenue? That people, they still have traffic backing up on College. Raising Kane, is that what it is?
Both, both of them.
Both of them. This does not appear that there would be that problem with the drive-through.
We would get into those specifics at the site plan.
Okay. Very good. Commissioners, any other questions? It looks like a nice project. Anything else? Okay, at this point.
Thank you.
We need a motion on item 6F, Red Barn Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
So we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations. Reports. Only thing I have is, for those of you who are able to go to the Fall Festival, it was just a splendid, splendid affair. There was, I'm anxious to hear how many people they thought were there, but it was any idea? Because it was easily triple, quadruple what it was last year.
7,500 is what they're estimating.
Is that right?
They were thinking 5,000 last year, so there's...
Yeah. It was, it was fricking staff and volunteers to be commended. It was a wonderful event. Anybody else? Commissioners, any other reports?
Question or report? Prospect scheduled to reopen on time?
I hope so.
It appears that it's maybe going to be delayed just for a couple of days.
Okay.
It's close.
Next week is, it's supposed to be opening next week.
Okay.
They have less. That's true.
Staff, anything else? Dawn? Okay, Cory?
Did you introduce Cory? Okay.
Okay. He did, he brought him, yeah, before you came.
So you went and did it?
Yep.
You're not supposed to do that. What's that about? So, he's, he's the new town... He's a new engineer, first hire for the town of Timneth. Timneth employee, and he's going through the mill right now. We're making a rough on him, so... But he'll come out the other side.
Sure.
Yes.
Great. Very good.
He got a little bit, he got a little indoctrination tonight. He didn't eat before this, so he's, I could hear his stomach the whole time.
Okay, good. Mine too, thanks. Anything else? Matt?
I have nothing more to add.
Okay, very good. Do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.